I think we should all, you know, be aware, and a good reason for, the reason it is that way is that the, whereas with the medallion system, with a two-tiered ownership structure, where you have drivers, and then you have a small group of owners, the compensation, the way the taxis are, the owners are paid for their taxis, is by blocks of time. In Boston, taxis, drivers lease taxis for 12-hour blocks, which is an incentive, of course, they're gonna stay on the road for that whole 12 hours to make their money back. In Brookline, I'm told taxis are leased for seven-day blocks, but the compensation model with Uber is different. With Uber, Uber takes 20% of the credit card income from the rides. So the compensation is not based on, you know, basic generic blocks of time, it is based on actual sales of rides. And so the whole Uber model is focused on the busy times, and the open market aspect of that is that smart drivers will, I don't know, stay at home, or read a book, or whatever, with their smartphone on, and when they know it's gonna be busy, and smart drivers will realize what the busy times are, they will click on and say, okay, I'm now available to drive. And then they will drive, and then once, you know, things slow down, a certain number of them will log back off and resume the rest of their lives. But at all times, if, in the open market model, a certain number of those drivers will remain online, and so we'll be able to service the customers who need rides during the slow times of day or night. So, a critical difference. So, thank you.
I just have one thing to add. It doesn't seem to be a lot. Can you, sorry, just do that. Thanks. I wanted to say this before, but I'm an old man, so my memory's a little sloppy at times. If there was a lot of interest generated by this whole thing from drivers, I think you would see more drivers here. I know Todd, there's been like 50, 60 guys at some of these meetings at some time, so... I just feel, I'm just saying that, you know? I think, I think I got...
We only got to go today.
Sorry, I'm not talking about the information, what I'm talking about is the interest.
Yeah, sorry, let's just, let's keep the, that's what I, it's great for people to talk, thank you very much, by the way. Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask you one clarification?
Yeah, sure.
George, can I just ask you one clarification? As a driver, nowhere in your, in your speech do you say whether you prefer medallions or whether towns you go to medallion or not.
I really don't know. It's a big, it's a big question. I think, I'm not personally gonna participate in a medallion situation because I, I'm 72 in September, so...
You look great for 72.
Yeah, everybody tells me that. Talk to my doctors, you'll get the real story. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, come on up.
The reason you are not seeing to me in Javas, I have, I spoke to many Javas, they just lose faith...
Sorry, just one second, can you say your name, just for the record?
Oh, my name is Don Fred Gillis. I have been driving at base for almost, almost 20 years.
Thank you.
I spoke to many Javas. They, they just lose faith in the system, because we've been coming here for almost seven years, and it's almost every year, you hear the news, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming. So it's not because Javas lack of interest, they just don't believe it will even happen. In addition to what the gentleman before Mr. Robert said, he said that Javas may, Javas makes an average of $10,000 a year. That's what they report. He doesn't mention what we pay for the taxi tax. So if we had our own medallions, we would be making enough to pay the bank, you know, to pay taxes to the town, and to make enough for ourselves. So most of us are for the medallions, and we just cannot wait for, for the opportunity to come. That's all I can say.
What's that?
Sir, just a clarification, that's from the drivers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So...
My name is France, I'm driving with State Car for about nine, 10 years. One thing so we can realize, actually, is like everyone, many people say, we are changing work. Businesses, big businesses are shutting down. That's give the opportunity to many people who was working in big businesses to have their own business, and to run their family, to run the business, and have money to help their family. In this case, I think shut down to big company like Bay State, Red Car, who have many, who have one owner have many cabs, and who have a lot of drivers working for them, and every year after we stop doing the same things, we found again a better return on that business. As a driver, I think this would be a good opportunity for me to own a medallion, and to run that business on my own. Thank you.
Every, every time you went to speak, someone got right behind you.
That's good, that's good. Just one time, hi, Joe Bethany again, from Bay State Taxi. You know, the price of the medallion that was quoted here is, they've gone down considerably in Boston, Cambridge, Philadelphia. And I wanted to also refer to the Sheller report, which states that Drew Sheller interviewed many drivers in Boston, Cambridge, and Brookline, and if you read his report, he'll say that Brookline drivers make as much, if not more, than Boston drivers do, than other surrounding towns. And I also wanna say what Mr. Gillis said was that, you know, they're paying us a lease every week, you know? And that, if they're paying us a lease every week, and he's been doing it for 25, almost 30 years, he can, he could easily have been an owner operator, just by the leases that he pays me. What medallion does is, it gives, incidentally, I have 45 credit applications on my desk from the medallions, and Bay State Taxi recognizes that the day of the big company is gone, and the era of the one-two cab owner is, is where Brookline is gonna survive. And we need to sell these cabs, we need to get them out to the drivers, we're dealing with a large financial institution that's gonna follow the finances for Bay State Taxi, because we have a close relationship with our drivers. And many of the drivers don't have, they may have had, like skipped on their credit a few years ago, but it's very hard to get credit, right? And especially when you're dealing with an unknown commodity of a medallion, no one knows what it's gonna be. But, this is why, you know, Joe is 72 years old, I'm almost 70 years old, I'm done, you know? I'm all through with the cab business. The cab business is for the drivers, that's what it's for now. People, I'm a business owner, and I, I wanna make it available to the drivers, because they're the ones who should be owning these medallions, and then if it does grow up in value, they're the ones who benefit from it, not me. Because as soon as you get the okay, we'll probably sell almost all of them to the drivers. And it's gonna be up to them to make it work, to make it worth money, you know? And, you know, I don't mean to beat a dead horse, okay? But you talk about, what is ownership? I'll tell you, I'll tell you what ownership is, and everyone seen me go through this, everyone who's worked for me, right? In 2000, the Transportation Board came to me and my brothers, and asked us to buy Red Car, which is going out of business. They were gonna close in two weeks, and they wanted us to save Red Car. So in two weeks, I raised $2 million to buy Red Car, right? And that was in 2000. Okay, so 9/11 rolls around, I've got half the cabs sitting in my garage collecting dust. So what does the town do? They pass a law saying that if you're not using license, that we're gonna take it back from you. I said, no, it's an old thought, right? Okay, so, the licenses, oh, by the way, I also bought, I also bought Bay State Taxi. So all these licenses I paid for was taken away from me within two years. Seventy-five of them was taken away from me in two years, right? So you talk about ownership? There isn't a normal person who would invest in Brookline, unless there was real ownership in Brookline, right? And real ownership is medallionization. You may not like it, everyone talks about how bad Boston is, but yet, when the Transportation Board passed the rules and regulations, well, they have this in Boston, these rules and regulations are good for Boston, they should be good for Brookline. Happens all the time. And I sit there like wringing my teeth, because we're not Boston, we're Brookline, you know? For years, for, I've been running Bay State Taxi for 25 years, and 25 years, we've given, we've given nothing but great service to the town, we're a community asset, not a liability. I can't tell you how much money I spend, I can tell you that the Vets Program is right around $100,000, and those are $3 cab vets. $100,000 and $3 cab vets, okay? And we pay, we pay the town, basically, except $25,000 a year to service them. They go figure that one out, okay? And we do all these small jobs, and you think these drivers wanna do those jobs? They don't wanna do those jobs, all right? Who wants to sit around and wait for a $3 job, and someone's gonna give you $3 on Vets tickets, and there's never a chip that comes with it? So what do we do? We have punchback, we have other work that keeps, that supports everyone. And if you do a job that's really bad, we try and hit you with a good job. And this is how we pay the drivers back, you know? So if they take a, if they take a job that's really a bad job, in my mind, there's no such thing as a bad job, right? But if you're out there working, and you're waiting for half an hour for a job, an hour for a job, and you get a $3 fee around the corner, that's tough. And I can't tell you how many times these guys here have taken people from Trader Joe's to Winchester Street. The meter doesn't even turn, you know? And when a citizen's hands, the drivers, two Vets tickets, the citizen's in a change, is that right?
Yes.
They want change. I mean, you know, so these are the people that have been servicing the elderly in Brookline, they do a good job at it, they know it's not a good paying job, but they do it anyway. They do it because they're part of a company that cares about them. I think, I like to think that, like they think we care about them, I think I do, you know? And, but, at any rate, in the, in the event that medallion are ever threatening, I'm not, I'm just stating a fact, we cannot stand business if you don't medallionize. If you leave it the way it is, Uber's gonna put aside its business, and Bay State Taxi will become like Uber. That means no Vets tickets, it means you won't be serviced from Brookline, you won't be taking Mrs. McGillicuddy back and forth to her doctor's appointment, or hairdresser, or to the hospitals. You don't, you do a ton of work out of the hospitals with Brookline citizens, you know? These are the things that no one sees, and yet, it's not me doing it, it's the drivers, you know? Without the drivers, there's no Bay State Taxi. Thank you.
Joe, this is definitely important, a clarification, you said that there were 45 applications on your desk for...
I'm sorry, say it again?
You said there's 45...
Credit applications, right.
For medallions.
Medallion loans.
Right, and do you have like a general demographic makeup of what they would be, are they typical of your driver, are they townspeople, who are these people who want the...
I'll provide you with their names if you'd like.
Just a general idea, you know, since you...
Oh yeah, yeah.
Are they mostly your drivers?
The, the drivers, the only applications I'll take are from my drivers, people who are known, you know?
Okay, so basically, a lot of the folks who are here...
Excuse me?
A lot of the folks who are here, at least...
Mr. Gillis has one, Samuel has one.
Right, right, on this side of the room.
I'm sorry?
On this side of the room, basically, over here, are your drivers more or less?
There's only three of my drivers here.
Okay.
The gentleman over here, the owner of Bay State, over in the wall is here, he has application, and the other people don't mess with him, they're part owners of Red Car.
Okay.
You know, but, and it's like Mr. Gillis said, right? A lot of people, this has been going around for 20 years, by the way, this isn't something, some plan that we just concocted in a week, okay? We're going around for 20 years, and I don't like the plan, but we need to save the Brookline cab industry. If you wanna have a cab industry, you're gonna have, you have to step to the plate, and forget all these little innuendos about this may happen, or this may happen, or that may happen, and let these people become owners, you know? Really, they deserve it, you know? 25 years in Brookline, what does he have to show for it? Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Dolly Taffish, Brookline Town Taxi. I think at this moment, we have to just sit and think, what this stage are we at? What have we done? The town already spent tens of thousands of dollars on two consultants, the operators already spent enormous time, a lot of communication. What do we got to lose to move ahead? No matter how much we wanna beat our head against the wall, what we're gonna pay or get, or what Joe wants, or what Amit wants, or what I want, or anybody else want, this is gonna be a market-driven situation. This paper came out today, it's a taxi industry paper. A few months ago, when Chicago announced an auction of 15 new medallions to raise revenue, they set a minimum bid of $360,000, just above what most owners consider the market price. The auction was widely publicized, and apparently, no one showed up, okay? So no matter what we wanna do, it's the market that's gonna decide where we're gonna stand. So we already came this far, we have a great plan, let's go ahead with it, and if it's such a bad plan, it's not gonna happen. If I don't wanna buy it, or bet on the auction, I won't. If this gentleman can afford to buy it, he won't. It's, but, let the market, let the people, let the drivers, let the owner be deciding factor on this, you know? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, come on up.
My name is Keith Long, and I have three taxis in Brookline. I just came a little bit late, I didn't hear the argument about the situation, but in generally, when I hear about this, I'm really shocked, it surprised me.
Sorry, when you heard about which?
About the opposition to the medallion ownership. I support it, and I believe all the drivers in Brookline support it, all the owners support it, and the town support it. That's why the studies keep going for a few years, and the town was spending money to study this, and we, we have been told it's almost done. Now when I hear this kind of opposition, it looks like me kind of joke, joke. We've been suffering on this business. We've been suffering, we've been waiting for this medallion business, because the idea of the medallion, on my understanding, is to improve service in Brookline, and to make more money to drivers. If the drivers lease a car by themselves, they can make more money. Also, if the companies are more, less companies, and the spy system is different, and the, if the medallion owners are, if they have their medallion owners, they can improve the service in Brookline. So the whole idea was to give more, better service, and to make the drivers more money. The gentleman I just, when I came, he was talking about how the drivers are making money in Boston, in Cambridge, different towns have different ways. Those are under, under medallion, the different, we are under licenses. When we get under medallion, the drivers could make more money, and the city also could make, the town can make more service. So I'm supporting for the medallion, and I hope it's gonna be accomplished soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, sorry, John Harris, again, just a few things I should have mentioned earlier. The first thing, and I will get you the, the exact citation on this, but a study that was done partially by Harvard Business School, and that a couple of studies that were cited by the Federal Trade Commission, say that when, if you compare a city that has medallions, and then a comparable city that does not have medallions, that the, the city with medallions had, the, the price of taxi rides is 11 to 25% higher than a comparable city without medallions, and that in a number of instances, when cities have gone, had medallions, didn't like the system, and went to, and got rid of their medallions, which is very difficult to do, but when they did, service levels did not go down, delay times in terms of waiting for a ride did not go down, there seemed to be general satisfaction with the non-medallion situation. So the reason I mentioned the 11 to 25% higher, if you have medallions, is that the Vets Program is certainly very important, but, you know, if, if medallions cause fares to rise up, and they will inevitably, eventually, when, if medallions reach these 100,000, 300, 500, 600,000 dollar levels that they have in adjacent cities, that money has to come from somewhere, and ultimately, it will come from the fares, perhaps indirectly, because I'm aware the town separately determines what the fares are gonna be, but ultimately, with enough pressure, if, if they're either gonna come out of the pockets of the drivers, or the fares are gonna have to rise. So that's something to be aware of very definitely. I do wanna say, Joe's plan is just plain excellent, and if everybody in the business had, you know, the same good heart, and the same very reliable, long-time people that you work with as Joe, it would be just fantastic. And by the way, I'll also say that in all the discussions that I've attended about taxi service in Brookline lately, there is one company that, with that exception, has gotten very good service reviews, and that's Bay State Taxi. So I just really applaud Joe's record in the business, and the plan that he has for is to take care of his drivers, and I think that's just fantastic. But I do wanna tell the, tell the drivers that La Coptra, which is the plan that everybody is talking about following at this point, is very clear that moving to a medallion system would lead to consolidation of ownership in the, in the industry eventually. And in fact, you folks just, you know, asked him about that extensively last Monday. So that will happen eventually. It's, you know, Joe's plan to disperse medallions, or licenses, or whatever, to, to the drivers right now, is just a fantastic plan, and it is a great benefit for current drivers who would be beneficiaries of that plan. But again, if medallions down the road, and the tier system is a very short period, a short system, two or three years, down the road, which means what, four, five, 10, 20, 30, 40, 50, 100 years from now, if medallions are truly at those very high market values, you know, your sons, your daughters, whatever, would not be able to buy into the business, because they simply would not qualify for those loans. So there, that is why there would be consolidation. People who already have money, who already have a proven business record, et cetera, et cetera, would be the ones getting the loans and amassing the medallions. That's exactly what has happened in Boston. So in the short term, while the, the current plan, to Joe's plan in particular, and also apparently in this tier plan, there's gonna be special concessions for existing drivers during this two-to-three-year transition period, will have benefits to drivers in the long term, in the, in the medium term, just four or five years down the road, going to a medallion system will really, really be detrimental to drivers. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just gonna say that for, we, we still have time, but for people who are coming up for a second bite of the apple, please keep it brief.
This will be brief. I just wanted to mention that I've taken a look at the draft town taxi regulations intended to implement La Coptra.
I'm sorry, I can't get the gentleman.
Sorry, can you speak louder?
Okay, looking at the, hi Mike, how you doing?
Good morning, thanks.
I've been looking at the town's draft regulations, which would accompany the implementation of the medallion system under La Coptra. Unfortunately, as I read it, and Todd maybe can clarify it, it wouldn't really be compatible with the regulations as they're currently written to make the medallions available to drivers. The current regulations as written contemplate the medallions being placed in the hands of the companies. I suppose the companies could turn around and sell them to the drivers, but there's not, no guarantee in the current plans that the town has developed. And the other serious problem is undermining what would otherwise be an exciting opportunity for drivers, is this obsession with accompanying the change in the regulation of taxis in Brookline with a windfall for the town. Now, if you want to improve the taxis that are on the street, the vehicles, provide opportunities to drivers, assure that benefits continue to be available to the elderly and the handicapped, and we improve the carbon footprint of taxis, that's fine, but to do that, and at the same time generate a $15 million, or whatever it turns out to be, windfall for the town, as La Coptra has promised and advocated, just seems like a belief in miracles. And I think we have to, the town needs to get its feet back on the ground, and be realistic and honest with everyone about what it's doing. And that's why in my written testimony, I use the term "good faith negotiations." That means a mutual respect and trust, and clearly, I heard from many of the drivers who have spoken here today, and the owners too, that the relationship between the town and the drivers and the companies is deteriorated. This has certainly dragged on too long, and I agree, we need to come to a conclusion at town meeting in the fall, we need to come, the report, and a warrant article, that tells everyone exactly what we're doing, and needs to take into account all the changes that are happening, that have been mentioned here. But there really needs to be an open process with all the stakeholders whose livelihoods and plans are at stake are included. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we can be fast, you, you're being fast.
I just wanted to conduct on that, oh, Joe. Oh, sorry. Hi, just wanna comment on what Luke Scheyer said, and I thank you for the photos, I appreciate that. But, you know, one thing that was mentioned, which kind of frightens everybody, is that, oh, you know, the price of the meat is gonna go up, if the price of the medallion goes up. Well, the price of the medallion in Boston is about 500,000 right now, if they can get it, right? And Brookline's zero. And who do you think has the highest beat rate?
Boston has the highest.
Brookline does.
No, Boston no.
Yes it does, no, 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 yes it does. Initially, 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 in first of all, I would say, Boston is a little bit higher, but as you go beyond that, Brookline peeps up on it, so the prices are really the same, okay? Now, you have a very unique situation here, which is all these problems that are coming about, oh, Boston... about, oh, Boston does that, and then, you know, people will consolidate medallions, and they become another editor tangier, and buy, you know, wine brews in chili, you know? You, you have an opportunity here. Right? Two, because you're starting from the ground up. Take the, the problems that are in Boston and don't allow them to happen in Brookline. Limit the number of medallions that one person can buy. Three. One, two, whatever you want. You know? Limit the number they can buy. That's it. Simple as that. You know? Thank you.
But I'm not coming here to talk, I'm just coming here to listen. But I'm a little bit confusing about this thing going on, because Mr. Joe says or something, so I don't really like to, because he says the Boston price is lower. And Brookline will start one-fifty and going up one-eight mile. And Boston is...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And Boston, they start two-fifty and one-eight, one-seven a mile. I don't understand what, you know, is going on. And also, this is the first time I've seen like big people talking on behalf of level people. I would like to know, you know, what behind this. I, I'm a little bit confused about it, because in my country, we always say, you know, when the rich people or the big people, you know, talking on behalf of the poor people, there is something behind, something hiding, we don't know. So, as a driver for, I've been driving in nineteen ninety-eight, I would like to know, you know, what's behind this, because all those companies, you know, support the driver to get the medal, but I'm a little bit confusing. I just want to know what's hiding behind this.
What I really think is, this is really, there's a, we need, the town has to make a decision, because this, this industry in Brookline, the work that's in Brookline is being attacked by Uber and other ilk things. And, uh, it's hard to say right now, because everybody's been doing this long enough, knows that the business is slow in the summer, and like I said before, I think this is probably the slowest summer I've ever seen. But, I think if, if the town does medallionize, you can regenerate, regenerate, I had this thought, you could regenerate interest in people getting into this industry, because there's an opportunity other than, you know, going to Uber to look for, to become an independent, have your own business, if, if, if opportunities exist, like maybe with Joe and the other, the other owners here, that, uh, that would counteract what's happening with Uber, in a sense that it presents an opportunity to, for drivers or anybody else to get into this business and rejuvenate it. And it's up to the town to make, um, because my, what I've seen from Uber customers and heard from Uber's customers is they like the service, they like what Uber's doing. And, uh, so, I, I don't know exactly why they're going there. I don't think it's the price, I think it's, I think it's the service is very good, from the point to make a call, to how it's, how it's, what takes place between getting in the cab and getting there. But I think there's a real need for, for a decision to be made about this medallion thing, because the longer we sit on the fence, the more the industry is being attacked by these outside things. Because there's money in it, this business, otherwise people would not be trying to come into the business through the back door, so to speak. Uh, and like I was talking with the captain here, it's, uh, this, this public safety issue is here. I mean, I drove a cab for, I think, thirty years, and it's the most scared I've ever been in my life, is being in the taxi cab. I can tell you stories, but we don't have time for that.
Could I go real quick, mostly about motivation? I appreciate, John Harris, again, just real quick. I appreciate the question about motivation and, uh, and I, just, just to let you know, in my case, my motivation in this, I have no formal, you know, I'm an occasional customer of taxis. I have not yet signed up with Uber, but might do that, uh, down the road. And, but I am the son of a small business owner. Joe has convinced me how tough the, that the taxi industry is the toughest industry around here, with incredible competition and high cost. And, uh, you know, I, as the, I, again, my father worked in the other toughest industry with incredible competition and high cost. As you may know about restaurants, ninety-five percent of restaurants close within the first year.
John, John, sorry, I, I gotta ask you to...
Going too long?
Yeah.
Okay. So, that's, that's number one. Son of a small business owner, and so I feel I can identify in that way. Combined with the fact that I'm a nineteen-sixties idealist, and we went for big causes, ecology, women's rights, et cetera, et cetera, where we didn't, it's not as if we're, I'm certainly not gonna make any money out of this. I have no real personal stake in that way. So, two other very quick points. Talking about the restaurant business, and there's a comparison here, which is, basically, the restaurant business is also regulated, in Brookline, is also regulated by a town agency, and the restaurant business, I believe, also works on a one-year license from the Health Department. And, um, basically, I submit that many restaurants in town are roughly comparable with the taxi situation. I'm told that a taxi, an individual taxi, which is a high expense for a taxi owner, might last five years. Well, many restaurants in town, number one, they also have just a one-year license, no guarantee they can continue after that one year. And second of all, if they don't own the building that the restaurant is in, they may have a ten-year lease. So, ten years rather than five years. It's also, you know, you, you have to make a leap of faith to renovate, to open up a new restaurant, the, the high costs upfront. So, the point is, it can be done, even in a high competitive situation. The final thing I want to say, and without medallions, that is, it can be done amongst people who really want to. The final thing I want to say about, again, for the, the future people, which could be amongst the drivers, could be amongst the group here, any of us, for our friends, for our sons, our daughters, our cousins, whatever, who down the road may want to buy, to enter the taxi industry and don't get favorable treatment, such as in these first initial tiers, there are many situations where, where people, you know, are not that sophisticated in reading markets and buy way too high. That's what we've seen with an awful lot of homeowners since two thousand and eight. And, um, you know, I submit that what we want is, is taxi drivers and taxi owners who are expert in providing taxi service, and who don't necessarily have to develop a second, completely separate, you know, and all the pressures in that market, and who, who we really, it's not fair to expect them to develop an entire additional area of expertise in reading financial markets and interest rates, and what is a good, what, how many thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars is a fair price for a medallion, how much is too high, what's the market gonna do in the future? That's an entirely separate, you know, realm of expertise, that we have hedge fund managers, et cetera, et cetera, to, to deal with that stuff. And, and so, the danger if, of, you know, innocent, well-meaning people, just as they bought houses way too high in two thousand and seven, they could do the same with taxis.
Okay, thank you.
And that's a danger I want to avoid. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right. If there, if there's no one else who would like to speak, um, I take, it's only, it's only two of us, I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting? That's gonna happen. Oh, there's three, sorry, we have three. We have, oh, sorry.
Hi, Joe just said something very interesting to me. Go ahead, Joe.
Oh, I'll say it, I'll say it.
Okay, we have one last comment.
It's a very quick one. The thing is, uh, you know, this Uber thing is, if, if, if a passenger calls and complains about a taxi in Brookline, any of the cab companies can call it in, it's something egregious, and call Hackney, and Hackney will deal with it, bring them in, and really get to the bottom of it. Somebody could, if it's, if it's egregious enough, somebody will lose their license over it. But if that happens with Uber, what do they do, unless it's a, unless it's a crime, you know? There's nobody, I mean, you can't call Uber, basically. If you want to deal with Uber, my, it's all emails. That's, that's the way it is.
Thank you. All right. If anyone else would like to speak, you're welcome to come up. If not, um, somebody would like to make a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Okay? Uh, I think it's unanimous, we're adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Really appreciate your input, and for those who came to listen, I appreciate you coming to listen.
Hey, Jack, can you say more?
Uh, yeah, sure.
I'm, I'm talking to...